It's six oh one, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll pause for a moment of silent reflection. Chief Nodine, I'm going to lead the plan.
Budge lead this. At the United States of America and to the Republic of British hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call on determination of forum?
I'll be glad to. Brian Williams.
Here.
Jerry Burmeister.
Here.
Corey Hall.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Bruce Skaggs.
Here.
Five out of five members present, we have a forum. Approval of minutes from the previous meeting, these are in the Google Drive as well as online. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the minutes from the February eight twenty twenty four meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, we have a second for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the February eight twenty twenty four minutes, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Okay, moving on to department reports, in our Google Drive, we have Park Report from Aaron, I don't believe Aaron's online. But from the sound set, things are going well, the golf course opened and it was packed and they're having a great time with the simulator on days where it's not super nice, so that's going well. And then we will turn it over to Hannah for the planning department report. Um, we're flying through it Hannah.
Right, um, I don't really have anything other than what's my report, um, other than HPC had a really successful open house, um, at PAS on the thirteenth of February. Um, we got such good feedback, they, and a lot of people want us to host it again, so I'm really looking forward to that. Um, we had a really good opportunity to educate on what HPC is, what they do, um, and their importance to our downtown and surrounding area, so.
Great. Any questions for Hannah? Great. We will move on, we don't have any old business tonight, we'll move on to new business, ordinance twenty four oh three amending the zone map. Planning Commission item one thousand four twenty twenty three hyphen zero one. The petitioner and the petitioner's representative is here tonight, would either of you like to go through the commitments that we've received?
Good evening, Madam President, my name is Brian Tuie, uh, the members of the town council, I'm representing the petitioner, thank you for hearing our very brief presentation. To sum up the commitments, there are thirty commitments that we have, uh, sent to Hannah Rose, uh, after the planning commission meeting. And the reason there's thirty is that the planning commission asked, uh, the petitioner to add additional commitments to the twenty four or five that they submitted at the time of the planning commission meeting, they did so, and then the petitioner has been, uh, had one meeting and several telephone conversations and emails with our neighbor immediately to the north. Uh, and we added some commitments that, uh, uh, to, to just pertain to those, our immediate neighbors to the north. And, uh, so we wanted those to be of record too, and those are the last three or four commitments on there, they related to that we would not, uh, build, uh, two-story homes on all three of the lots and right next door to those folks, we would not have side mobile roaches, again, to prevent light from coming into their house. We're going to make a contribution, uh, to the cost of a fence, uh, on their property and, um, I think that sums up though, but they're all contained in the commitments we sent to Hannah Rose and we did agree to all the commitments the planning commission asked us to make in addition to ones we originally presented. If there's anything else, we're glad to make a presentation.
Any questions up here for Mr. Tuie? Do you want to ask about commitment number six, Brian?
Um, yes, um, I think it's probably more of our concern than it is yours, but would you have any issue on number six? Altering the language, um, by halfway down where it says, or if the town accepts altering that to, or if the Fall Creek Park Board accepts and then deed it to the Fall Creek Park Board rather than the town?
We'd be fine with that.
Okay.
I, that's completely fine.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Tuie before we open it up for public comment?
Okay. Have a seat, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, before opening public comment, I'm going to remind you of a few things, um, please approach the podium, state your name, uh, and address your comments to those of us up here at the council, not to the petitioner or to staff, and you'll be allotted five minutes. So with that, we'll open it up for public comment.
Good evening, thank you for allowing us to come up this evening and speak, my name is John Lord, I live at sixty nine eighty-two South Lakeview Court. Some questions I have, and I, we didn't see all the commitments from where we were sitting in over here. My one, my concern is water, I'm assuming the town is going to be bringing water to that new subdivision. If so, is it going to be coming to Foster's Branch Ridge and Foster's Branch Woods? I would love to have fire hydrants in our subdivision, love to, so I hope that happens and I hope it happens early in the process, possible, I'm not sure what the time built out is on this subdivision, I guess several years, and so I hope we're at the first part of that. Another question about the road, there were concerns about the road and an agreement was made, I believe, to do a road, to do a traffic study. My question is six hundred a city street, does the town of Pendleton control that road? The whole road, all the way down to the end? Okay, great, alright, so, all the commitments about making the road wider or wider than the traffic studies shows by coming out on to thirty eight and all those will be implemented, is my question.
So the traffic study will be done in conjunction with primary plat, according to the commitments, correct Hannah?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so, we, they are going to do a traffic study, the timing of improving six hundred west will be dependent on the speed of the development and all of that, correct Hannah Rose?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great, my next question, is there a commitment to build a sidewalk along six hundred?
Yeah. Yes.
What length?
By the way.
Absolutely, not the width of the sidewalk.
The length, like how hard does it go down? Um, if we could go at the, behind this document, you'll see, now, we have to remember that these are not engineered drawings, this is just a general
Sure.
like concept map, but if we go further, like in this document, just scroll down. Okay, yeah.
So it'll be.
Okay. Yeah.
So the length of the town, and do you have an idea when that would be completed?
And it would be within phases with the property act, that would be up to the builder.
So until, we really can't hold them, I guess, make sure it's done until the entire subdivision is filled?
Well, it's one of those situations where it's kind of chicken or the egg, you don't want to start improving six hundred without the sidewalk, but we also don't want to build the sidewalk before it gets into, I mean, until they get a good amount of housing done, is that correct Hannah Rose, the way you understand it?
One construction to bring the help or if the road, you know, needs to be expanded, which it does.
Right.
Making sure it's in the right place, but, I mean, essentially, yes, it will be done by the time the subdivision is done, but it's on the developer, how they want to face that.
And do you have a timeline, this subdivision will be done?
I, I don't.
No, I don't either.
Okay, alright, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anybody else for public comment?
This way.
Yep.
Members of the town board, my name's Gary Brammer, six two two eight Foster Branch Ridge. Um, I'll try to be brief because it, uh, it's starting to sound like we've got a done deal here, but, um, there's a lot of information tonight from the developer as well, questions from the neighbors, short amount of time for you guys to decide yes or no. But before you vote on this proposal, please drive through the area on the west side of I sixty nine on State Road thirty eight. Along that corridor, you'll find several stately homes along thirty eight. Four neighborhoods that have a hundred and forty-two homes, executive in style and price, with no duplicate homes. Why can't we require D R Horton to follow the existing twenty eighteen comp plan that encourages residential development that reflects surrounding residential character and intensity? Their plan of two hundred homes on mentally sized lots with the same floor plan used over and over, in our opinion, does not meet the requirements of the twenty eighteen comp plan. We want residential development in that area, but we want development that enhances the western corridor into Pendleton without diminishing our property values. We would love to see Horton construct all executive homes on half acre lots, lots, not the approximate three point one homes per acre that is proposed, and when I say three point one four homes per acre, I'm talking net, when you back out the streets, the ponds and the, and the woods. That comes out to about three point one four homes per acre. Allow me to point out that on the north end of their project, the homes next to Brian and Stephanie's home, the stakes show us that the backyards from the pad, there are yellow flags, the stakes say back of pad. There will only be twenty-nine to thirty feet in length from the back of the house to the tree line. I'm not sure if the tree line stays in or if the tree line comes out, but even at that point, there's not much room there for backyards on those houses. It's this the type of housing that reflects the surrounding character and intensity. D R Horton is planning to limit parking on only one side of the streets. Will a Pendleton Police Department be responsible for enforcing this, or will Horton have its own safety patrol? We need more detail about the berms and landscape on six hundred. Their plan of a fo- forty-foot minimum burn with five shade trees, ten evergreen trees and twenty-five shrubs does not seem to be enough to hide the homes from road six hundred. In an earlier meeting, they stated that they would also use a five, four to five foot tall burn, I'm not hearing any of that anymore. In an earlier meeting with the, um, planning commission, we asked why the elec- eleven executive homes had to exit on the six hundred rather into their own neighborhood. Still no answer or still no response. And I'll repeat what I said in a prior, uh, planning commission meeting, if this is such a great project, then how, why has not one single resident of Pendleton stood up in support of it? We have heard for years that the intersection of County Road six hundred and State Road thirty eight is unsafe. Yet with your yes vote, you are allowing a possibility of four hundred additional cars passing through that unsafe intersection every day. Let's al- also consider the I sixty nine interstate master plan of twenty twenty one that brings a hundred and forty-sixth street through the middle of their development and connect with the future Keystone Development District at State Road thirty eight. That potential massive interchange would only be about thirty yards away to the east of the entrance to the Horton Development. I know the talk is, we won't be long, we won't be alive long enough to see that, but that's not the answer, because we're planning for that interchange. Members of the town board, I'll repeat my earlier statement, there's just a lot of information being communicated tonight in a short amount of time to decide yes or no. I ask you to please table this tonight, drive through the area, consider all things mentioned tonight for or against the project and decide if it's the best option for the west side of Pendleton. Thank you for your time, and I do have, I do have copies of the map that I printed out, if you're not familiar with the interstate master plan, and it would show you how close the sixty-seven street extension or seventy-third street extension, whatever they call it now, and a hundred and forty-sixth street would come through the entrance to the Horton Development. If anyone wanted to see that.
When is that supposed to take place?
I, I don't have that answer, and again, the answer is not, I won't be long, I'll live long enough to see it, but.
I would like to live long.
I would do. I would too.
Um, Karen, if you can scroll down maybe six pages, you can see, uh, the four to six foot mound is still, um, exhibit D on here. Keep going. I think it's. Yep, there you go, back down. There. It's okay, that mouse is a little crazy.
Sorry.
There are those berms. There, I mean, that shows the evergreens, the shade trees, so that, that is still reflected in the plan and in the commitments.
Okay.
And I just want to point out again, that these are not, what we're seeing right now are not engineered drawings, these are just concept plans, a lot of this will come in as they go through the primary plat process as far as alignments of roads and depths and setbacks and all of those things, that's not really what we're doing here, that goes back to planning commission, they do the primary plat process and then secondary plat as a staff review. Uh, so all we are here to do tonight is approve the zoning from Ag one to single family three. Is that correct Hannah, I mean, the way that I explained that, that we're just doing the rezone portion tonight?
This is just for land use appropriate, is it appropriate for this land use? Um, and Scott is online, if I'm not mistaken, he would like to answer some questions about the hundred and forty-sixth street extension.
And possibly also utilities, I thought maybe Scott would like to talk about water.
The water, yes, so we'll promote him as analyst and let him answer those things. Um, also Jeff has brought it to our attention, uh, that the changing of the commitments from the park town to the park of number six, I don't think we can amend those because you're.
What, what you have is with certified by the planning commission, not, so you cannot alter the language that they.
Okay.
Okay.
But they can use the primary platting process for other commitments. So, and, and that's certainly something that.
Okay.
D R Horton's.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, Scott, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I feel like I'm talking to space, go ahead Scott.
I am in space, no, um, the water will ha- by ordinance has to, um, they have, the subdivision has to be hooked up to the, uh, town water. And then, um, it'll be done in a way that if the residents in the existing subdivisions would like water, then, um, we can do that, but we want to, we don't want to do it if just one or two homes want it and everybody else wants to stay on wells. Um, as far as a hundred and forty-sixth street, that, um, is going to be formally modified, that most of the traffic will, um, as it comes in from Hamilton County, somewhere midway between six twenty-five and State Road thirteen, that'll turn north and most of that traffic will come onto State Road thirty-eight from there, there will be a, uh, a smaller classification road, local road that will continue probably along the interstate and then turn north at the Gaines property and run through the Gaines property, but that, that road will not be a, um, arterial as it shows now on the long range plan. And then also, when you look at the thoroughfare plan, that's a long range plan, so those lines do not mean the exact alignment where that road would be. Think of those as broad arrows, uh, just showing where the flow of traffic would be, it's a common mistake for people to take a thoroughfare plan means exact alignment and that's not true.
Reski, did you have anything else, I wanted to make one final comment.
Uh, no, not unless there was something else somebody wanted to ask.
Um, is that our code goes off of gross density, not net density, um, that's how quite a few codes are written, um, as far as number of units per acre. Um, so the plan does, or the, the concept plan, uh, does mean our code in two units per acre for S F three. I, off the top of my head, like Munster's code, they do gross density, uh, if you look at places around here, um, that is not typically, it's not that I have found.
Any questions up here for Hannah Rose, our planning director, or petitioner, or the petitioner's representative? No? Hannah, anything else to add, petitioner, anything else you'd like to add?
No, no, I think that covered it, and Reski covered the other thing.
Anything else Brian?
No, Madam President.
Okay.
I actually went out last week and drove that and looked at all that. I think one of the concerns I had was maybe six there not being widened up and then the safety factor, people pulling out onto thirty eight. We may have to address that some way with signage or something, beware, and I just don't want anybody to pull out there and get hit up.
And I think giving an alternate to that hairpin turn, that's six hundred and thirty-eight, because if you look at the site plan, the, the main entrance to the subdivision is on Thursday eight, um, and that'll be worked through with N dot to have an appropriate sized, you know, um, and if they make them do any modifications to thirty-eight, that's completely on N dot, like a passing blister would probably be appropriate. They'll probably make them do that, but that's at a different stage of figuring out what that entrance looks like, and I think, uh, you know, with the traffic study would probably show that a large portion of people are going to be using the exit from their neighborhood to thirty-eight, and there will be times that people will go up to six hundred and use the hairpin turn, um, at busy times, eight or five, you know, but for the majority, if someone can enter right to their neighborhood, that's where they're going to go, based on the site plan.
That's my big concern, six hundred and thirty-eight, when they come out there.
Yeah, right.
So, can you guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, um, during the process, we've said several times that six hundred south will be widened, six hundred west will be widened. That's why we have impact fees so that road construction can happen in conjunction with the development so that we don't make the Hamilton, what I call the Hamilton County mistake, where they would build large subdivisions or small subdivisions and then dump it onto a dinky little county road and then come back, once everybody has the house occupied and traffic's even heavier, they would try to reconstruct the road to meet the standards required for that traffic, we are not going to make that mistake and we have brought that up several times, but, um.
So this road would be.
Somehow it gets, keeps getting missed.
To a local, or excuse me, a collector, uh, roadway designation, or at least the half of it would, since they're only donating the half right of way. They will have, uh, but it would be built to collector standards, which I believe are, do you remember how wide the lanes are? Off the top, I know local is thirteen.
Twelve.
Is it twelve? Something like that, so, much more sufficient than what it is.
Thank you Scott for explaining to the audience tonight.
Yep.
This received a favorable, favorable recommendation from planning commission with the commitments that we've received tonight, um, so we've gone through this and I'll entertain a motion for, or against. Oh, sorry, I didn't see Lynn, I'm so sorry, come on up.
I thought you were just having a slight interruption.
No, 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 you're fine. Sorry.
Uh, my name is Lynn Lawyer, I'm with Decker Lawyer in Maynard and I represent, uh, the properties cornered across the street on thirty eight, had in total about two hundred and some acres there, and even though you've heard lots of comments, my clients believe that this is a good transition plan, it is good transition between the houses, the large houses to the west and to the south into what is your transportation center there, which is the I sixty-nine thirty-eight interchange. It provides both houses, but also from a community standard, because I have lived in Pendleton or around Pendleton since nineteen sixty-nine, if you want to maintain the small town feeling of Pendleton, you need a variety of things, and I think this will help do this in this transition, you need houses for all ages, you need houses for all socio-economic levels. If you only have one socio-economic status in town, that is not a small town feel. It also will provide some, hopefully, some other development closer into that intersection whi- which will provide jobs here, Pendleton is in danger, as I talked to the playing commission about this only being a commuter town. If you want people to have a small town feel, they need to have a better commitment to the town, that means they need businesses here, people need to work here, not just travel to the north side of Indianapolis, so my clients feel that this is a good transition property, I think Mr. Tuie has worked very hard with Pendleton to give them the things that they want, but still have a realistic viewpoint of when you have an intersection at an interstate, that is generally commercial, this gives a transition property between the two with all kinds of houses in it. So I'm speaking out in favor of this council granting this change in zoning, thank you.
Thanks Lynn.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm really sorry I overlooked your. Anything else before we call for a motion? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
You're voting for a motion to approve.
Yep.
Twenty-four oh three. I would make that motion.
I have a motion for approval, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance twenty-four oh three amending the zone map, believe would you like to do a roll call vote?
Yes. Jerry Burmeister.
Yes.
Brian Williams.
Yes.
Corey Hall.
Yes.
Steve Denny.
Yes.
Bruce Skaggs.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to, do we, the first read counted of planning commission, correct, and so we're good.
Great.
Okay, resolution twenty-four oh four, additional appropriation for ARPA. Um, in order for us to spend money, we have to appropriate it, and so this isn't necessarily new spending, it pertains to previously approved projects that we're just now incurring uh, the charges for, but in order to pay for those projects, we have to appropriate the money. Um, and so tonight we'll be appropriating four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, um, from the ARPA account. But we have to open a public hearing, so with that, I'll open the public hearing and entertain any kind of public comment regarding this appropriation. No public comment, okay, citing no public comment, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval.
Just to be clear, these were, these are projects that have already been approved, how long have you paid out of ARPA funds?
Yeah, there's nothing new in there, correct Karen, it's all just things that we've, and primarily, they've been approved between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Uh, and so, we just are now incurring the fees for those.
Yeah, they've already been approved, um, it's hard to budget that because we never know until the end of the year exactly how much it's been spent, because, um, we don't know what bills are going to come in, so I can't really budget that, and so we wait until the beginning of the year and then budget what's left out of the budget.
Yep. Any other questions for Karen? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of resolution twenty-four oh four, additional appropriation for ARPA, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Appointment to the Economic Development Commission, um, we currently have a vacancy in our appointments on the Economic Development Commission. This works in tandem with the R D C, and so we have identified a potential candidate for the E D C, um, in Tim Thompson. Uh, this is a town council presidential appointment, but at this point, I will entertain additional, uh, additional names for appointment or a motion for approval of putting Tim Thompson on the Economic Development Commission.
Make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion, do I, can I have a second? I have a motion and a second for approval of appointing Tim Thompson to the Economic Development Commission, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Okay, um, appointment to the South Madison Fire Territory Board, Steve Denny has elected a setback in his role from the SM F P T board. Uh, but I want to thank Steve for jumping in with both feet and diving in headfirst.
Into the shallow end.
And, no, not into the shallow end, we've learned a lot, um, and it's weird to think we're the senior members of this council, but I am appreciative of all of, uh, your hard work on that. And, uh, so we get an additional appropriate, or not additional appropriation, we get an additional appointment now that Steve is stepping away. Uh, so I would like to nominate Corey Hall to replace Steve on the South Madison Fire Territory, or Fire Protection Territory Board.
I'd second that.
Okay. I'm going to count you as the motion, Jerry, as I nominated.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of Corey Hall joining the South Madison Fire Protection Territory Board, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Now, if, we've got Chief Nodine, we've got Assistant Chief Gardner here, um, we've got two fire territory items, so you guys can pick which one you want to do first if you'd like.
Figures. Good evening everybody, uh, my name's Chris Nodine, Fire Chief of the Fire Territory here, uh, just to kind of give you a little bit of rundown, congratulations Corey, welcome to the board. Steve, on behalf of the members of the Fire Department, thank you for your time and effort, it's been, uh, quite interesting, this. Uh, quite interesting this last year and a half and stuff, so we appreciate what you've done for the department, so.
Thanks.
Uh, just as of today, uh, we've done four hundred and seventy one runs for the year. Um, we're on a fast pace to break all kinds of records going so far, so it's, that's a lot. Uh, in twenty twenty three, we hired fifteen full time firefighters. January one of this year, we hired three full time firefighters to accompany those fifteen. Uh, so that puts fifteen on shift, three in the front office. And in July, we've sent out conditional offers to nine other uh members and they've all accepted, so they will be coming on July eighth. Members of the department, um.
So you'll be hiring nine.
Nine in July, so we're very fortunate, um. I never thought I would say this in the the years that I've been in public safety, but. We are actually taking members from other departments that are to the west of here, so. Uh, Hamilton County firefighters and stuff are looking at our department and so. You know, not just myself, but my staff and well as the firefighters and I think the boards and stuff that we operate and answer to, uh. I've got to pat themselves on the back because that's pretty much unheard of, our attorney um has basically said, you guys are making a name for yourself. Usually it's people that are going to Hamilton County to work, not coming to Madison County to work, so it's kind of a a good thing to hold our hat and held our. Hold our head high uh on that. A couple other uh little tidbits of information, uh, the ambulance. That we ordered way back in twenty twenty two finally is slated for uh. Completion on the twenty sixth of this month, so a couple of us will fly up, do a final inspection on that. Uh, for acceptance, uh, the reason why it is actually gonna be done on that date instead of being pushed back like some other ambulances that are being pushed back that are in line right now. Is that that ambulance will be at the Fire Department instructors conference, which is the largest fire department conference in uh world, and it's held here in Indianapolis for a month, so. That truck will be on display for several thousands of firefighters to put their hands on and look at, so we feel very fortunate to have that going to the show. Uh, the other ambulance, when that comes back, it will be placed in service and then we'll have an ambulance that will be actually going to Pennsylvania to get remounted. Uh, which leads me to the Republic information that that we have here uh for board approval on that, it's a loan. That will be for the ambulances, a striker caught and a powered load system. Uh, that total is four hundred and ninety five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars, and that's gonna be spread out over five years. Um, we have that actually budgeted out as far as that goes. Uh, we have worked with Republic First National uh prior to that with a turnout gear loan uh that we have, uh, we got. This is the second year on it, so we've got it budgeted in and then one more year and then those are. That turnout gear loan is um paid for and stuff, so with that.